This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a city. We ask that you continue to instill in us the spirit of patriotism as we have just gone through the celebration of one of the greatest days in these United States, the celebration of all those persons who have done the uniform of these United States. We ask that you continue to be in prayer with those who are in need of your care and be continuously in their presence. Bless our troops who are in harm's way, bless this city, bless this state, bless this country. We continue to give you thanks for all that you have done for us, lead us, guide us, and we will continue to give you all the praises and blessings in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting held on November the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of November the 7th through the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Mayor says he doesn't have any proclamations. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance amending city code concerning flood control regulations. This brings the city into compliance with the federal laws and regulations. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this. Well, this is a first reading.
Mr. President, since there was no opposition at this time, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the ruse and act on this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, upstairs in talking with the building inspector, the building department, this is just language changes, nothing changing as far as laws concerned, so we're just updating our language. I think there was a flood study done, I think you said what, two years ago?
Yeah.
Within the last two years. So we just basically changed the language, no ruse.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So then, our final public hearing is a resolution granting a nomad of street right-of-way. This is for a portion of Old South Fourth Street. This was requested by the sole owner of all property abutting the portion of the right-of-way. The utility companies have been notified. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Did you find out where Old Fourth Street was, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I found out very well.
I understand this is a portion of the right-of-way that we didn't need, it was much bigger than we needed, and this is to enhance the development that's going on on that corner, going down the street.
As you go down Fourth Street, when you get almost to the mall, the street curves and goes out to Rainbow Drive. The portion that goes on straight to the mall, that's Old South Fourth Street. I learned that today, or last week, I guess. Anyway, that's what we're talking about. Is it over, you need to vote?
We need to vote. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven, is a resolution approving advance for travel expenses. This is for Robert Avery to attend the National League of Cities Conference in the amount of $373. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? From my understanding, this is a one-way ticket.
That's the reason we approved it.
Well, I'm glad you told me that because I thought it was just a half-a-way ticket, so at least now I can go all the way now. Okay, good. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did I get over?
We have a motion in second. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Robert, we expect you to come back.
No, you didn't expect me to get there, you were trying to give me a half of a ticket.
New businesses, any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider, it's a resolution 377, authorizing termination of psychological services with Henry A. Payne III for his services to the employees of the Gadsden Police Department.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to consider.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution also that I would like to ask unanimous consent to consider today. It's authorizing termination of professional services with Henry A. Payne III under Employee Assistance Program.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
These services are being provided by another organization that the city has approved of.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. This is a resolution authorizing a change order for additional items of work on the 2012 street servicing project. I ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is again, this is change order number one to the 2012 street resurfacing project. This change order essentially encompasses what's known as the G-treatment in terms of establishing a surface level for, or baseline surface level for paving. Chad, you can, you know, please feel free to step in if I'm not adequately explaining that.
Sure, this is, the primary portion of this change order is, like you were saying, for a G-treatment, and basically this treatment would go down in between the subgrade, which is the, basically the dirt level, and the pavement. What's happened in our resurfacing, since we've been out, we've been out for about 30 days now on the contract, and some of our worst roads that we are milling up, instead of getting down to a good paving level, we're getting actually down to the subgrade. So, all that exists is basically an inch and a half of asphalt, which has probably got a lot to do with it cracking so bad. So what we're proposing to do as opposed to digging down into the subgrade and coming back up with a much thicker paving layer, which would be a great expense to the city, we're going to do a G-treatment to try to seal off the base, and that way that the rainwater and things like that doesn't get down into the subgrade and rut out our base, and so this is going to kind of act as a sealer in between the two layers. Is that adequate?
That's good.
Call for the board.
Basically what happened, years ago, we didn't have the heavy garbage trucks like we have today, and in an effort to get all the streets repaid, they did not put the proper base in them to take care of a garbage truck like we have today, and when it stops and starts, it just goes down, tears the street up. We've gotten some of them fixed, but hopefully in future, we'll get them all fixed. Is there any other discussion?
This will bring our paving up to a little over $2 million this year, and of course, that's not going to get all the streets that need paving, we realize that, but we hope to spend about that much every year on our streets and try to keep them in as good a shape as we can, so a little over $2 million.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Citizens request Jimmy Leonard from Manor.
Good morning.
To share, to our mayor, Gaiden.
Can you put the mic a little bit closer to you then? There we go, thank you.
To our mayor, City Council, to all that are present. I'm here to represent Manor, which is Metropolitan Area New Nutrition Association. Manor is, what is Manor? In the Old Testament, a account of Israelites' journey through the wilderness, God sent down food from heaven to feed his hungry people. They called this food Manor. Manor is a nonprofit corporation organized by local people. Its purpose is to meet nutritional needs homebound people. The board of directors composed of local people of all walks of life, determine overall administration of the program. They are responsible for raising funds for the administration to the program and providing meals for clients who are unable to pay for them. Manor workforce consists of 170 volunteers, three part-time employees. Ms. Euan Stokes is our director. We have Manor Sunday that's coming up on September, I'm sorry, November the 18th, and we'd like for all churches and all organizations to come together because we like to provide meals for the people that are, that do not have meals. The Good Nutrition Program with meals prepared to meet the special dietary needs of each client, therapeutic diets are available on the request of client's personal physician. We purchase the meals from Riverview Regional Medical Center under the Morrison Management, where they are prepared under the supervision. Friendship is also through the volunteers that develop a special relationship with the councils, with the clients, while delivering the meals. The safety check, if they should fall or otherwise need medical attention and have no one else to check on them, they are regularly checked on by some of the Manor volunteers. Also, they are serving, at the present, Manor volunteers deliver 57,916 meals in the year of 2011, which averaged out to be about 240 meals a day. We have 170 different volunteers delivering meals into 22 different routes. We ask and request that you all will be with us for Manor Sunday, November the 18th, and that you all will provide what we can. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To summarize that, that is a wonderful program for feeding the needy, one way or the other, whether they're disabled or elderly and can't get the right food that they need, and they need money to do that, and they need volunteers to do that. So that's a summary of exactly, and it is a wonderful program.
Mr. President, I think she left something off the presentation. Tickets.
I have tickets.
Well, we need to know what that event's about and what tickets can be gotten and everything.
I'm sorry, we do have another occasion that we're having, hot cake supper, $6 at the McDonald's of Southside, Alabama, Sunday, November the 18th at 5, between 5:00 and 7:30 PM. Proceed support also to Manor. We also, if you need a gift basket or whatever, for whatever occasion, you can check at the Manor Department and purchase it. The money stays for the Manor Department, and do not hesitate. Do we have any other thing, mister? Do we, do we need anything else other than the hotcakes?
I think.
And you all feel free, and like I said, it may not be in your home or your house or your neighbor right now, but it may be you later. So this supports a lot of people with their nutritional needs. Some people don't have to go back, what, to extended care or the different, back to the hospital, simply because they get the nutrition at home. You as family, you know that you have to work, so while you're working, you feel better about your family receiving a meal, a hot nourishing meal, and then this also provides them for, what, getting healthy and not having to go back to the hospital as well, and seeing a good and smiling face all the time. Thank you.
There are tickets here today that you can purchase for Mr. Billingsley, our nurse.
I think just for the general information that the city is, the citizens of Gadsden are a very generous city, we already put about $20,000 into that program. They need more money and they need more volunteers because they have a waiting list. It's a great program that we certainly support and will continue to support.
You know, Mr. Billingsley is sitting back there next to her, and people talk about when they retire, they don't have nothing to do and they're bored, and then some folks retire and say they got, they're too busy. But Mr. Billingsley, probably busier than anybody I know, but he takes time out to volunteer to deliver meals. It's one day a week, is it?
One day a week.
Okay, and then about a couple hours a day. So I mean, you know, please ma'am and please sir, if you've got one hour, 30 minutes during the week, please go and volunteer, because they could do a whole lot more meals if they had more volunteers.
I want to ask Billy, if you remember upstairs, in 2011, they served over 57,000 meals, was that correct?
Uh, yes.
57,000 meals.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
240 a week.
And our understanding is they could have served more if they had had more volunteers.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the thing, they could have served a lot more meals with more volunteers.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
Oh, I'm sorry, and also, a lot of people don't know that, but that lunch, because I know some people who participate in that program, that lunch really has enough food on it for those people who would need another meal in the evening and don't have the provisions of having one. So it really is enough for two meals, really. It's a very good thing, and we support it 100%.
It comes out of Riverview Hospital, too.
Right.
That's who prepares the meals for them. Next is Mike Gallardo with the Edgewall County Youth Orchestra. Please state your name for the city clerk and address.
Good morning, Ms. Nelson, I'm Mike Gallardo, and I'm the music director and conductor of the Edgewall Youth Orchestra. Mayor Gaiden, members of the council, I just wanted to come in today and say thank you for your continuing support, not only of the Edgewall Youth Orchestras, but of arts and fine arts programs throughout the city of Gadsden. We're very, very fortunate in Gadsden, I've had the opportunity to travel quite a bit with my role at the Edgewall Youth Orchestras and some of the other work that I do, and I've never been in a community of our size or even larger community that has more arts, more art saturation happening, and more community support, really broad-based community support for the arts. And it starts here with the mayor and the city council and the city of Gadsden and the support that you give us, so I wanted to take an opportunity just to come in and thank you for what you do for the arts programs in our community, because there are a lot of students who are involved with orchestra programs, band programs, choir programs, dance through the Downtown Dance Conservatory and other dance programs, visual arts, there's so much that's going on, and I did want to just kind of take a moment also and let you know that this is a big, big weekend for us through the Gadsden Cultural Arts Foundation and the Edgewall Youth Orchestras. The EYO is going to be out and about on Saturday, it is our first annual EYO Button Day, and that's why I have my "I love EYO" button on. We're going to be at the intersection of Hood and Broad, and we're going to be in front of the Two Johnson Stores in Gadsden. We're going to be handing out the EYO buttons and collecting money for the youth orchestra program, so we hope that when folks are out and about this weekend, that that's one of the stops that they make, and also, we want everyone to stop by the Hardin Center for Cultural Arts, because this is the grand opening this weekend of the Festival of Trees, and we also have the Let It Snow exhibit that's taking place there. The Downtown Dance Conservatory is going to be there performing as a part of everything that's going on. Admission is $6 for adults and $5 for children, but members are always free for the programs at the Cultural Arts Center, so we hope that you'll join us for that. And one other thing I want to note, we want to thank you for your support of the EYO program specifically as we moved into our new home at Temple Beth Israel. Now, the Music Center at Temple Beth Israel, it's been a terrific move for us, it's given us a great home for the EYO programs. Students, parents, everyone involved with it is extremely excited, and we have a performance coming up as a part of the concert series this year for the first year at the Music Center. Drake White from Hoax Bluff is going to do an acoustic show on Friday, the 23rd of November, the night after Thanksgiving, so.
Is that at the Music Center?
That'll be at the Music Center. It's a 7:30 PM performance with Drake White, solo acoustic. Drake is about to break it really, really big, we've been told. His first single on Universal Nashville Records, big country label out of Nashville, is going to come out in January, and this might be the last opportunity to see him in a venue this size, and just 150 seats for that, and that's just one of the things that we're trying to do at the Music Center, we're trying to not only make it at home for the EYO, but also make it a vibrant performing center as well and do a performing arts series there, too. So that's Friday, the 23rd, and of course, the EYO's annual Rock and Roll Christmas Concert is at Wallace Hall at Gadsden State Community College on Saturday, the 15th of December. There's a lot happening with the arts in the city of Gadsden, and every time you hear somebody say, "Well, there's nothing to do in Gadsden," you know, we always make sure to remind them, there's everything that's happening at the Hardin Center, through the youth orchestra, through all of the school arts programs that are taking place, everything that happens at Gadsden State. So there's a lot to do in Gadsden, and we appreciate the support of the mayor and the council and of our community, and I thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak with you this morning.
Is your concert on the 15th, is that a Saturday? You usually do it on a Sunday afternoon.
This, this one is a Saturday night. It's Saturday, the 15th at 7 o'clock at Wallace Hall, Saturday evening performance.
Great.
Thank you.
I had the honor of going to the concert that they had last Sunday afternoon at Wallace Hall. If you've never been to one, you really missed it. This is the 22nd year of that program. They start the kids in the fifth grade and go all the way through high school, and that's not only in the Gadsden system, it's also in the county system, it's also in the Atalas system. So by the time they get that far along, the ones that have had the intestinal fortitude to stick to it and do it, they're great, and they are really good. It's amazing. I took a iPhone and did a little, and I showed all these guys here what you did over there, and it is, it is really wonderful. It's, you can't, you just can't explain it. I used to say we didn't have any culture, now I say we got more than we could pay for, but we work it out some way, and we appreciate what you're doing, Mike, just keep up the good work. You too, Bobby.
Good talk, good talk.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Sure. First of all, we would like to thank you all, everyone, who had a part in the Patriots Luncheon last Wednesday. We had a capacity crowd. We're talking about the Gadsden Edgewall Patriots Association, it was a great turnout, and it was an absolute privilege to honor our greatest generation. We inducted eight World War II veterans. We had a hard time deciding which one would be better, but when you started looking at all eight of those nominees, from Bastogne to Normandy to Iwo Jima, there was no way in the world that you were going to come down to one or two. So that's why we inducted all eight, because they were absolutely even. We also inducted some from Vietnam era, Korea, and two posthumous. We had a great speaker, Billy, I think you'll agree with that.
Absolutely.
Colonel Carter couldn't make it. He was, he's a member of the Red Tails, the Tuskegee Airmen, 94 years old, he was in the hospital, and since, I think he passed away on Saturday of that same week. But Colonel Lewis took it over, and he did an absolutely great job. He was very informative, I don't think anybody even looked down, did they, Billy, during that whole presentation?
No, they didn't.
He didn't. He did a great job, he really did. One sad note about it, and I want to thank them again, I want to thank everybody who had a part in this, especially the capacity crowd to show their patriotism, but we got the sad news that one of our eight, Chuck Davis, passed away two days ago, and his funeral will be today. Thank God we went ahead and did it before that happened. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everybody on December the 7th and 8th, which is a Friday and Saturday, and December the 14th and 15th, this is a Friday and Saturday, there'll be Santa will be at the gazebo in Alabama City. Randy Gladon and Dwight Lodge sponsors this with the city of guests, and you come out and bring your children out, have a picture made with Santa Claus, it don't cost anything, just bring your cameras, you can stay with Santa Claus as long as you want to, tell them what you want, they usually have hot chocolate, and this year we're going to have a special event, we'll have some singers there, some Christmas carols, when you come up, so that should be interesting and be different this year. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Bill? I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Robert? Have a couple announcements. There will not be a district meeting this month due to a number of issues, and this coming Saturday, which would normally be our district meeting, the WMDJ will be having their food drive, and this is number 20, 26, number 26, probably one of the largest food drives in northeast Alabama. So please ma'am and please sir, and churches and groups, participate in this food drive this coming Saturday with WMDJ radio stations at 12:40 AM on your dial, so if you'll tune in and drop by, well, we have a number of volunteers who will be out there all day long accepting food and taking it in. I'm not sure what the goal this time, how many tons, David, you know?
15 tons.
As with the previous year, the goal is 15 tons, and the food drive will begin at 8 o'clock, and it'll run until 6 PM that day. Now, for financial contributions, if anyone were to make a donation, if they were paying by money order or check, that would be payable to the Edgewall County.
Food bank.
Food Bank, correct.
Okay.
So we're looking forward to making our goal.
15 tons?
15 tons.
Okay, that's a lot of food.
David, how much, how many, how many dollars does it take to buy a ton of food?
Oh, yes, as it was last year, $400 would be the equivalent of a purchase, a ton.
A ton of food?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so we're asking everybody, including this council, to commit to at least buying a ton of food, to donate to the food bank, so please ma'am and please sir, be mindful of this announcement. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple things. I did want to recognize the chief and some work that he and his officers did over the weekend. There was a domestic violence issue, and I won't go into any of the details, but there was a domestic violence issue in my district over the weekend. The only reason I bring that up is I think with what I understand and know about the facts of that, the chief and the officers who were involved did an out. the, the facts of that, the, the chief and the officers who were involved did an outstanding job of managing that situation. Probably one of the best I've seen relative to domestic violence issues. And as you, as most of us know, those can be very difficult, and, and, and there's a lot of emotion as it relates to those, but they did a wonderful job managing it, considering that at the onset, they were demonized. And it's what, you know, you find in many respects. They get demonized until people realize just how much value they bring to a situation like that in terms of defusing. And so, again, chief, I want to thank you publicly, and then of course, ask that you pass that on to the officers who were involved because they did an outstanding job of managing that. And it's like an onion, you know, once you start digging into something like that, you realize that there's a lot more than, than what meets the eye. The only other thing I have is, and again, I, I do want to preface this by saying, I feel the support, you know, some of the things that were, were said by Councilman Harris at the MPO meeting last week. I, I will say this, you know, the, I truly believe that the I-759 project truly exceeds the capacity of, of the MPO setting. I, I don't know that the MPO setting is going to be sufficient to see that one through. The magnitude and scope of that project makes it very difficult for us to, to see through. It's a $100 million project, and I just don't know that, that there, there is any reasonable, there's any reasonable prospect that we'll see that in the short run. But I don't want people to get discouraged by that. Again, $100 million is a big number, I don't care how you look at it, but I don't want people to get discouraged by that because there are alternative methods for us to deal with our well-documented capacity and safety issues. For, for those of us who don't know and who haven't really noticed why that's so important to us, the Megan Boulevard, Hood Avenue area is where we have the vast majority of our auto accidents, and that's where we see the most significant capacity issues, the most significant traffic issues. What we're going to be pursuing going forward and what we have historically, there've been a lot of meetings, kind of off the, off the record, if you will, to address and pursue this, is some reasonable alternatives to, to procuring safety monies through Aldat as well as some capacity monies through Aldat that may not necessarily involve a completion or, or even a start on the 759 expansion. So, so again, I don't want people to think that we're not addressing those capacity issues. Again, I've said this time and time again publicly, we have the benefit of having one of the most well-respected city engineers in the state. And Chad does a wonderful job of, of working through some of the politics of that and getting us regular updates. The 759 project gets talked about monthly with, with, with the Aldat Director, so it's on the radar. Our biggest opportunity, again, is if the $100 million project is not an option for us, then what are some reasonable alternatives? And again, I'll say this again, and I want to be clear about this, I just don't think that the MPO setting is going to be sufficient for a project of that magnitude. We've seen with Highway 411 that the saber rattling that goes, that goes along with, with being there at the MPO meetings just doesn't really get it. I think you have to truly leverage your, our relationships, both in Montgomery and Washington, to procure those kinds of dollars for those, for that size of a project. So those are the things that we're actively working on, so please don't think that, that any of that is dead, but it may take some time, but we are, again, pursuing some, some other reasonable alternatives. Thank you.
Reverend Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Every opportunity that I have to talk about 759, I will do it. I have done it with congressmen, I have done it with our legislators, we have done it with MPO, we have done it with the National Highway Authority who's responsible for this, we've done it with everyone. The issue here is that 759 has been on the board for 20 years. It has been a very, very viable topic since 1999, I know, and that there were alternatives and, and other different processes put in place so that this project cannot go forward for whatever reason. 759 needs to be completed, and there's no doubt about that. The, the economic impact that it has on us as far as traffic on Hood Avenue, the growth of other retail industry in Gadsden depends a lot on how we can handle and direct the traffic here in the city of Gadsden. The people in East Gadsden have been very, very, very thoughtful and wishful and considerate and promised, basically almost, that there was going to be a 759, but as was stated in Montgomery, Alabama, by several different organizations, this is the first time that a city, a state, and other organizations, the citizens and everybody else have come together on a preferred route, and it just runs into a dead end. The, this, this MPO presentation gets back to the governor, it gets back to our legislators who are in part responsible for trying to make sure that we get what we need. And I promised all of our congressmen that every time I get a chance in, in any forum, that I will impress upon them the importance of us getting 759 completed. And I would like to see it done during my lifetime, but as I stated, I don't think it'll ever be done during my lifetime. But the project is a, is a necessary one. Yes, there are other objects, there are other projects that we have. We have, everybody has their own opinion as to why 759 has not gone forward. Some say, you know, well, they're just not going to allocate $100 million to one project, you know, when they can do 10 projects in the state of Alabama for that money. That may be true, but at the same time, I'll still rattle the sabers wherever I go to try to make them understand how important that project is to us and to the people in East Gadsden who are seriously affected by it, and the city of Gadsden who can, who, who need that, the city of Gadsden who needs it for economic development. We will continue to do that in every venue that is presented to us, I promise you that. That being said, I will also like to reemphasize what Councilman Reed said about the Patriots, Edgewall County and Gadsden Patriots Association presentation last week. It was beautiful. Everyone should have been there. Colonel, Colonel Carter, who was supposed to have been our keynote speaker, did not make it. He was hospitalized the morning of the event, and consequently, you know, we heard that he had passed the day after that event, he did pass. But now Colonel, Colonel Lewis, who spoke in his, in his place, was very, very dynamic, and like Ben said, captured the attention of everybody for the whole event. The one thing that he gave credit to the city of Gadsden was the honor that was given to those heroes, those veterans, those people who have served the country is so great. It is so great to see it in Gadsden. He would like, and he said, he, that's, this is the biggest event that he's seen anywhere in the state of Alabama, honoring patriots, and it's a very good thing, and I think we should continue to expound upon that, expand upon that, to make sure that we give honor to those people who are patriotic to our country and our city, and, and make sure that we continue on with that, with that process. I also would like to announce generally that we will have our District One meeting next Monday, November 19th, at Gadsden Recreation, East Gadsden Recreation Center at 6 o'clock. I don't know who our guests will be, but you know, we do have, we know that, that the police department will be represented, so those of you who have issues and concerns, please come out so that we can address them. Thank you.
Mayor?
I just wanted to say something to Bobby Welch back there and Mike. There is a lot of things going on at the cultural arts, the Imagination Place, Art Museum, the Music Center. There's really a lot of events where, I don't know if, if we've got it going good yet, Bobby, but I think Kay Moore was trying to come up with a community calendar. We, we need to get that somehow, and, and there's a lot of fundraisers, events, I mean, there's things all the time. Some of them are free, some of them may cost you a little money to get in, but they're always well worthwhile because you get food and drink, and you help some 501(c)(3) out. But hopefully we can come up with that community calendar before too long, and we can have it online all the time as well as on Channel 99, and more people can know about a lot of these things because there's always something going on. But thank you for what you do, although that's not working.
Due to, due to the Veterans Day holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage route will be collected, Tuesday, Tuesday's route will be collected, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday will be on the schedule, on the regular schedule. If it's not anything else, I'll entertain a moment with adjournments. Please leave your adjournments.